Julie.
Julie.
You know the Pledge of Allegiance, am I correct?
What is...
Why is there an echo? No. You got to fix that echo. Julie, I'm going to ask you to do the pledge.
Okay.
You're good.
There's still an echo.
Ready to go? All you. We're live.
We're live?
We're live.
And no echo?
No echo.
Excellent. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of April 15th, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, present tonight is Ms. Quirk, Ms. Whiteside, myself, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Corbett, and absent tonight is Mr. Bessie and Mr. Bowen, and Mr. Sullivan will be joining us via Zoom.
Correct, thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Mrs. Corbett?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Residents' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who chooses to speak to this board? Yes? You need to identify yourself, step forward and use the mic. And you have two minutes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Do I have to sit down?
Yes, sure.
I'm Reverend Ginny Doran at the Trinity Christian Church, and thank you, I know you all are... I'm not here for the line item that's ours. I'm here more to ask a question. We, as the Wareham Area Clergy Association, had sought to get a... I don't know whether it's called a license or what it is for the day, for the...
For the walk.
No, not for the walk, for the sunrise service, for Easter.
Yep.
And we were denied. We were told that the noise ordinance kept us from having, being able to do that. This is something that's gone on for more than 25 years.
The reason it was denied was because you would be using the bandshell instead of... And the noise ordinance, it starts at whatever time.
Seven.
And you were not denied, you were told you could do it after a certain period of time.
We were told we could do it after, at seven o'clock or later, which is not good for any of us, which is why it's called a sunrise service, which has always been done at 6:00 a.m., if sometimes even earlier. And we didn't have to use the bandshell. We were told we were not, we could not use the beach with an acoustic guitar. We were told we, obviously we couldn't use the gazebo, I think they're still working on that, but...
Yes.
We've used all of the above. We've been really loud and we've used an acoustic guitar and no microphones. So, I'm just kind of curious as to why, especially when I look at the agenda and there is something coming before you that starts at 5:00 a.m. for the 30-second annual swimming something or other. So I'm just trying to understand why one is acceptable and one, even with an acoustic guitar, is not.
Thank you. The decision for the use of town property lies with the town administrator, Mr. Sullivan, and he's the one who can answer the question.
And what if there's a dispute with that, where does it go?
It doesn't go.
My understanding was always that the selectmen were usually the final say.
He is in charge of all town facilities, buildings and grounds, with the exception of schools.
Is it possible, when he comes on, that you can ask him that question? Or I can ask him that question? I just would like to understand why a religious...
You could call him tomorrow. He'll be in the office tomorrow.
I was hoping for something public to explain, honestly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I say something real quick?
Is there anyone else? No. Then we will move on to... I don't know why it's under interviews and all of that, the stuff, it's really not a hearing either. I'm going to ask Ms. Moran to present the...
Question, are we skipping announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we skipping announcements?
No, we're not.
Okay, because I have some...
We are. I was.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Quirk.
Couple of announcements. One is, as you know, I am the Serpent representative for the Select Board. One issue that I would highlight is going forward after I leave the Board, how you would want to handle that. Not asking for an answer now, but it's just something to flag for you. And just so you know, Serpent has formed an environmental committee, which I'm on. And there are two issues before this committee. One is the nitrogen issue, wastewater issue that is facing the entire region. And that is the issue that the, that this committee will primarily focus on. Second issue is the, the question of the state citing renewable energy citing legislation and implementation of that. And there has now started a series of public hearings on that. I attended one last Thursday on standard conditions for large and small projects. And very interesting. I don't think we have time to, for me to give you a more thorough summary of it, but if, if any of you would like that, I'm happy to do it. I would just flag that they discussed an upcoming hearing on May 5th where the issues will be some of those that, that the planning board has really struggled with. The question of health, safety and welfare, how to define that. Question of cumulative impact, community benefit agreements. And I think all of these are issues that have come up in planning board proceedings. And I would also say that comments during this public session sounded very much like concerns that I've, I've heard raised in this town.
So the May 5th, is that a Zoom or is it an in-person?
It can be either.
Okay.
I was, I was planning on covering it via Zoom.
Okay.
And Serpent is covering these as well. And I'm thinking about the question of comments and what, what usefully either I or the town might be able to add to the deliberations. Next, I would just highlight that the bicycling committee members have met several times. As, as many of you will recall, the Select Board authorized the resurrection... That might not be the best word, but the...
It's seasonal.
The revivica... Resurrection of the bicycling committee. Bicycling committee has met and decided that that is premature.
How did you meet if you weren't appointed yet?
We met as private individuals.
Excellent, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, we would never, ever, ever, and honestly, that's one of the reasons to remain informal at this point. There are lots of things to discuss that could range over a lot of territory. And we are not at a point where being a committee of the town will be in the town's best interests, in our opinion. So we'll come back when, when it is otherwise. And I think that's it for me.
Are there, the bikeways coalition or... Aren't there public hearings on that as well? Am I...
There is a bicycling summit coming up.
Okay.
And it's in May. I can get you the exact date. But it is sort of a regional summit to talk about the extension of the bike path through the region. We are, Wareham is basically the last unfulfilled piece of this. So that is, that would be a goal. The thing to remember, though, is that the Wareham piece is as big as the rest of the South Coast bikeway. So we're trying to do, in this town, what the rest of the region has taken several decades at least to do. But we're determined to do it and to do it in a beautiful and useful way.
Okay. Can you send both of those dates? And we could have IT put them on the banner, maybe, would be helpful?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ms. Corbett?
I have a couple of quick questions following on Ms. Quirk's announcements. Could Ms. Quirk, should she want to, still serve as a Serpent person and report back to this Board, even though she's no longer a member of this Board?
We can appoint her as our representative, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, we can choose to.
Because for whenever it's appropriate, I think that's a great idea. I think she's well-suited for that role. My announcements are, this is a, a group I've gotten involved with. And there's going to be a presentation at the library for a new kind of fertilizer. I have gotten involved with the nitrogen, nope, urine diversion group. And I have gone from curious to pretty interested in terms of finding a way for this unique people P to be utilized as a way to grow things. So there will be a presentation on Thursday, April 17th, so that's this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at the library. And the... I'm an idiot, I got it completely wrong, not at the library. The presentation will be held Thursday, April 17th at 6:30 p.m. at the Onset Bay Center in Onset. The presentation will be given by Vermont-based Rich Earth Institute Education Director, Director Julia Cavici. And the Rich Earth Institute is a center dedicated to finding ways to turn human urine into an effective source of fertilizer, which is something that will be discussed during the presentation. I went to a previous presentation, it was really interesting. And I am going to go for a tour this Saturday to the Green Center on the Cape, where they're pursuing this very viscerously, so I recommend that you go. You can also have an Earth Day celebration with the Wareham Garden Club on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's a day of education and fun. And you can learn about all things concerning the earth and also a number of different topics from the Wareham Lands Trust, Land Singular Trust people, I'm a member. So April 22nd at 10:00 to 2:00 at the library. And this, on Thursday, April 24th, 9:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. is a book sale. Those are my people as well, please come out, they have great books. And the Wareham Land Trust is hoping for clouds on this walk, I'm registered for this. It will be taking place on Sunday, April 27th at 10:00 p.m.? Not a.m.?
It's a.m.
Thank God, okay. You can join the Land Trust and Marine Meteorologist Alex Kinsella Sunday, April 27th at 10:00 a.m. for a walk through the Douglas S. Westgate Conservation Area, where he will talk about, all, talk all about the clouds in the sky. And then there's, you can look in the Wareham Newsweek, Wareham Week as well. But this one, I'm signed up for, I think it sounds really interesting and that's it for me. Thanks.
Note to self, don't eat out of other people's vegetable gardens from now on. I'm good.
I'm just going to remind people that there is a town meeting and a special town meeting on April 28th at 7:00 in the high school auditorium. The special will be convened at 7:30. There are 16 articles on the regular and 16 on the, no, 20 on the special. What will happen is that the annual regular will be convened, the special will then be convened during it, and that meeting will be finished and then we will go back to the annual town meeting. There are some controversial issues on both agendas, actually, or both warrants. And that's it. So let's move on to Ms. Moran. If you would come forward, identify yourself for the record and let us know about the articles that your Bylaw Review Committee has been working on and is sponsoring on the...
Good evening, I'm Julie Moran, I am the Chair of the Town Bylaw Review Committee. I am the second chair because this committee has been in existence for about a year and a half, this current iteration. What you're, what we're going to present at the special town meeting are a series of four articles, Articles 7, S. 17 through 20. And what they really reflect is the first step in what will be a multiple-step process. So we are going, hoping to see you again at the October town meeting with some more evolution of the bylaws, which are... What we have found is, over the years, we have had some wonderful folks that have worked on the town, the general bylaws. But there have been some challenges around changing laws, some provisions, obsolescence of provisions. We've had a lot of situations where there was not time or time, let's say, or an oversight of looking at the formatting, the consistency of the language. So this is the first step and we hope to come back in the fall, as I said, with the next, next steps, which would be formatting, looking at consistency, looking at missing sections that need to be, the numbers need to be moved around. So we've got some more work to do. But what I'm going to do is just briefly, in my time allotted, just go briefly over the four articles and just give a bit of an explanation as to why we made the decision to include them in the articles. The first one involves the challenges that the town have when there have been changes to the bylaws, whether through legislation or through the action of the Attorney General. All, as some of you know, when we have changes to the bylaws, we need to submit them to the Attorney General for approval. Sometimes what comes back is missing, is some non-substantive changes that were made. Sometimes it is inconsistent numbering, titles are off. Some of those types of things that make it more problematic for our folks in the community to be able to use the bylaws effectively. So what we are asking is we will, is to authorize the town clerk, again, only when the legislature or the Attorney General has made, has made some changes to make non-substantive editorial revisions. And again, this is on sequencing, numbering, lettering, formatting. This is not substantive work in any way. So again, this is authorizing the town clerk in a very limited way to make those changes. Again, because we feel it will make it more, they will be more effective, they will be more easily understood, easily to follow, easy to look up, different sections if we can make these, this, this, this new bylaw. So that is a proposed bylaw that we're bringing forward. The next one is Article 18, which is the adoption of gender-neutral language. And what we're looking at is, we went through and are looking at non-binary pronouns, vocabulary, to really create a more inclusive text and to make it more effective with, with the way we live now. And a good example is, we currently have Board of Selectmen throughout the bylaws. We now know it as a Select Board, we now know Chairman as Chairperson. So those are some of the types of changes that we're looking to make. Nothing, again, nothing substantive, but it is really to just clarify and, and introduce non-binary pronouns in vocabulary. So that is Article 18. And again, that is authorizing the committee to do that. The next one is Article 19, S. 19, which is additions to the bylaws. And what we did as part of the process, we looked for, where were there situations where there were aspects of the bylaws that had gaps, that were missing information? And what we did is a series of additions. The first one was, we created a, a small set of definitions that are, are used throughout the bylaws, so that people looking at them, when they're looking through the bylaws, they're at the beginning of the bylaws, they can then read them and understand them in a more effective way. The next one was, we made a couple of, just updates to the warrant process to make that clearer for folks. We also looked at, looking at adjudicatory hearings and the process, if a meeting is missed and what that would entail. Again, that, that is what Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23D provides. So we thought it was important to make sure we included that in the bylaws. House numbering, the process has changed, so we wanted to make sure we were reflecting that. Adoption of fees, again, there were several provisions throughout about the adoption of fees, the same with, there were six severability clauses. So what we did is, we, as I mentioned in a minute, we deleted some of the sections and created one section for each of those subjects.
Quick question, do you mean adoption of fines or adoption of fees?
Of fines.
Thank you.
Did I say fees? Oh, I apologize, of fines.
I'm easily confused, I just want to keep up.
Nope, thank you. And the last article, which is S. 20, is the deletions. And what we did is, we looked, we created five different sections, five different attributes of deletions to explain why we took the action we did. The first set are those covered by town charter. We made sure that we reviewed the town charter. If something was in the town charter, we didn't feel it was necessary to recite it again in the bylaws. The next was, there were quite a few that over the years are now covered by state law, Massachusetts law. Many of them are word for word from Massachusetts law. So again, we felt that was something that we could effectively delete and would be, we would direct folks to, to go to Mass General Laws. All of the department heads were consulted on all of this, I should mention. So all of this, all of the additions and deletions were vetted with department heads who approved everything. The next one, Chart 3, is obsolete. There were some things, we talked about the casks in the middle of the road, the sheep in the road as kind of an example of, maybe it's time to put those out to pasture, sorry.
That's a good win.
Okay, so that was the next section. And then the last two section was, we deleted, as I said, a whole, about six, eight of them, severability clauses, they all said something different, the intention was the same. So what we did is, we create in the additions, one severability clause, which, which says that to the extent there's any inconsistencies, that the language will control. So we made sure throughout the bylaws that it now has one section that applies to it. And then the last one was, things that are covered elsewhere. We have a series, for instance, signs is a good example, street rules, that are covered under our zoning bylaws. And this language actually was somewhat inconsistent with the zoning bylaws. So we wanted to make sure that we didn't create confusion within the town, that, that the department heads would feel comfortable, that their regulations, the zoning bylaws, for instance, would cover activities. So we aligned those with, with, you know, with our town processes.
Thank you. I just would like to say that all of these changes have been reviewed by town council, not for content, but for presentation as well as consistency.
Correct.
Ms. Moran and her committee worked many hours. And the documents that I have collected over the time that I've been sitting in with you is a folder this thick. So congratulations and thank you very much for getting it done. Do any of you have any questions or comments or anything?
Comments is just this incredible body of work, so thank you very much.
Thank you, it's a, it's a first step, so.
Thank you for donating many, many thousands of dollars worth of hours to the town.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Ms. Moran.
Okay, thank you.
Take care. I'm going to ask Alexandra Zolo, the Executive Director, to come forward and talk to us about the article in the special town meeting, which is to purchase land using CPC land, it was CPC money. I can't remember which one it is. It's S. 11 on the warrant. Do I identify myself for the record, please?
Do I have to show my screen or how does that?
You have to share your screen.
Good evening, I'm Alexandra Zolo.
You're going to have to do it from the mic.
Sure, ma'am.
Thanks.
Good evening, Alexandra Zolo. I am the Executive Director of the Wareham Land Trust. And we have before you an acquisition project that will be on the floor for a spring town meeting. And this is called the Riverwalk Project. So the Wareham Land Trust has been doing projects like this for over 20 years, partnering with the town for acquisitions for open space, for, you know, protecting land and promoting sustainable development. This project is for 19.37 acres. And as you can see, it's situated between some other conservation land. So together, it kind of creates a patchwork of 50 acres. This does have letters of support from Mass Adabahn, the Kermit Park Association and the Mass Rivers Alliance. So... And I have, I sent you all the breakdown of the finances and if you need a copy of it, I have them. So I can pass those out also. So the total project is $1.325 million. The ask to CPC is 1.2, and that is the value of the conservation restriction. That is the appraised value of basically the development rights on this property. So yes, that's a lot of money. We will be applying to the State Conservation Partnership Grant and hope to return up to $375,000. We want to keep the CPC money healthy, we don't want to just deplete it all. And we have done that in the past. And there's actually an article at town meeting to do that from a past project that we've had. So we do have a history of doing that. And then the $50,000 above and beyond the purchase price, so I didn't have it written here, but the purchase price is 1.275. And then the $50,000 above is for like our ownership and due diligence. There will be no town responsibility going forward financially. So that will be, lie entirely with the Land Trust. It will not be an ongoing financial commitment. So I just wanted to highlight that this property is very much in the flood zone. It's not appropriate for development. And as it sits now, it could house 12 residential lots. They would each have their base floor elevation at least like 14 feet in the air. So it's not really a place where you could do affordable housing because you'd be looking at inaccessible houses. And sure, you can maybe have mansions there, but ultimately, this is going to have floodwater inundation. So it's really not appropriate for housing. Additionally, another reason why it's not appropriate for housing is that it is mapped for, the state has it under two different designations. It's like a critical aquatic buffer and it's also, they called it like a coastal resilience area also. So it's, it, it's mapped for habitat. It's mapped as an area for salt marshes to be able to migrate into. And salt marshes are kind of our first line of defense when it comes to sea level rise. It is very rare for a town to have the opportunity to save land where a salt marsh can migrate into. So much of it has been fragmented and developed, but this is a really great opportunity for the town. Additionally, the argument about taxes. This land is currently in Chapter 61 designation, it's in a forestry designation. That means that the town gets $10 a quarter, that's $40 a year from this property in taxes currently. If this property is to be protected, the property values around it will increase. When those people go to sell, they live next to trails, they live next to open space that's protected. Those properties are worth more, the town gets more money in, in tax revenue without an increased burden on services. I just really wanted to highlight that. Additionally, with the argument or the concern, I should say, about nutrient loading in our estuaries and nitrogen and all of that, this would keep 12 additional houses and septic systems from going straight into the Weeby Antic, which is already impaired. So if, if there were to be septic systems here, they would be mounded to get them up out of the groundwater level. This isn't really appropriate for that, and there is not sewer in this area. Additionally, this will be folded into our regular walk schedule. We frequently offer walks as... We frequently offer walks, as Sarah helped plug before.
I was going to say, that's the back of my head and Sam's head.
And this would be folded into that. We really want to get people out on the land, get them connected with the land. And we will be putting a parking area here. We'll be having a lot of free programming there, hoping to educate people and get them, you know, connected with nature. So in closing, you know, due to the unique features of the habitat, the sensitivity of the surrounding waters, the low-lying topography, the risk of development in this area, the Riverwalk property is really best served as publicly accessible walking trails that benefit everybody. Woodlands provide ecosystem services that help increase resilience. And it would provide a space for habitat and salt marsh migration. This project is a win really for both the human and natural community. So I am absolutely open to questions. I welcome them.
One comment before I go to questions. If you intend to pass this out at town meeting, you have to run it by the moderator?
Yes.
Have you done that?
I was planning to hear from you tonight, and then I was going to send it to her. Yes.
Yeah, so you would email it to her at moderator@wareham, et cetera?
Yes.
And you have to ask for permission. It's her meeting. She can either say yes or no. She'll probably say yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Just a comment. This is at least the second time that I've heard about this project and had the opportunity to go on the site walk. And I think this is a good project. I think it's a good use of this land. It's a beautiful site. And so I'm very pleased with this project.
I'm using on my phone here, I have an app called BaseMap, which allows you to look in detail and in depth into this. And I think it's, we'd be stupid to say no.
Yeah.
Beautiful piece of property. That's it.
Thanks.
So, yeah, that was the back of my head, Sherri. I don't know if the back of your head was on that, because you're on the same walk. It is a really, really, really pretty piece of property. And I'm really glad the land trust is putting it together, that the community preservation committee is helping get this going. And the Gleason family has been an amazing, amazing beneficiary to this town, or vice versa. But it was, it was, I'm sure, because families being families, this may have been an interesting project for them to put together. And they did. And this is yet another sign of what a tremendous family, the Gleason family, has been for this community. But also, thank you so much. This is a no-brainer. I love it.
So I'm just going to throw out some of the comments that I've heard.
Absolutely.
The 12 lots would probably result in million-dollar houses, which would be in addition to the tax base. And it would result probably in houses that did not have children.
Sure, yeah. And we would never tell someone that has children that they couldn't live there.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that that, if, you know, million-dollar houses in today's market and in today's world are going to be for second homes, I believe. The fact that it's in a zone where there's, in the two zones that you mentioned, those probably will be raised at the town meeting as issues. And the overall, the real question is, this is assessed for a change, 400 change. The sales price or the purchase price is the $1,275. That is a huge, it's tripling the current value. Now, I know it's chapter land. I get that. But I think that's a concern that will be raised at town meeting.
So I believe that those numbers are incorrect. This is based off of a, like, an appraised, we had an appraisal done on the property. The appraisal states that the property is worth over 1.3. So the assessed value is most likely due to the restriction of it being in chapter because that lasts over time. So even though that might say 400,000, where can you find 20 acres along water that's only worth 400,000?
I understand that. I'm telling you what I have been hearing from the public. And the public is saying that it is assessed, and that's what the town goes by, is our town assessments. The owners of the property had the benefit of not having to pay a tax.
Shit, sorry.
And, you know, the $40 a year maybe was $10 a year 20 years ago or something like that. But those are going to be concerns that you're going to have to speak to at the town meeting. I'm just letting you know that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns?
Has there been talk about possibly purchasing some of the other properties I'm looking at over here?
The, like, the other strips of marsh out there?
Yeah. It's just weird that, I don't understand how people own that, but...
I know. I think it's for fishing and fowling that people bought like strips of it for access. But I'm, we haven't actually been able to make contact with them. And I don't believe that the current owners have, like...
Knowledge of owning them.
Oh. But we would certainly be open to it in the future.
They're just, I was just looking at them and it's like really weird how it's laid out. Thank you.
So you did give us a very thorough presentation in the packet. So I appreciate that. And I think that that helped us understand exactly what the distribution was. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chadwick, sorry. There's just one question that I had. I was hearing thank you to the family. Are we getting this at a discounted price or full market price?
So the appraised value is 1.3. The value of the conservation restriction is 1.2. The town would be paying the price of the conservation restriction. Now, given that the Gleason family over the years has donated dozens of acres, this is not a charitable sale. This was the, what was agreed upon by five siblings. I can't imagine trying to agree with five siblings on anything. And so, no, it is not a charitable sale.
Okay. Well, that's, I just want to make sure because when I was hearing this, I thought we were getting a discount on this.
No.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zolo.
You too.
Thank you.
I'm going to move on to some licenses and permits. And I'm ready to hear from you, Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
Paperwork, I will say, most of the paperwork is in order. And the motion should be subject to paperwork, et cetera, you know, the usual blah blah.
All right. I move to approve Tipsy Mermaid LLC Heather Sylvia for a one-day wine malt permit for a paint night event on April 27, 2020, 2025 at the McFadden Hall, 186 Onset Ave, Onset, Mass. 02558, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, pending all paperwork and approval.
Hi.
Hi. This is Heather, Bill with the Tipsy Mermaid.
Oh, have a seat. May I have a, yeah, have a second. Excellent. Can you identify yourselves for the record and just let us know quickly what it is that you're looking to do?
Sure. My name is Heather Sylvia, and I am the owner of the Tipsy Mermaid.
And I'm Bill Harran.
Can you spell your last name, please?
H A R R A N.
Thank you.
All right. So we're doing a fundraiser for, it benefits the Kind Hearts for Kids nonprofit, serving foster and grandparent-raised kids. And we're going to be doing beer and wine. And it's April 27th, starts at 3:00 PM. And she's going to be painting on slates, doing like a class. And it's $45 per person. And, yeah, that's about it.
What kind of paints do you use?
Actually, I don't provide the paints. She does.
It's two different companies.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we're kind of collaborating together?
Okay.
Yep.
Excellent. And this is, in fact, the Onset Bay. We call it the Onset Bay Center. It is technically the McFadden Hall. But I just want to make sure that people know where it is so that they can sign up and go.
Yes.
Yes, fantastic.
Any questions? What is the name of the nonprofit that is benefiting from this?
It's Kind Hearts for Kids.
Okay, so that's the nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Excellent.
I just love the name of the Tipsy Mermaids. Who wouldn't want to be one?
Oh, I do.
No, this is a great, great project for a good group.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so. You'll be able to pick the license up probably on Monday?
Okay.
No, is Monday a holiday?
Is it Patriots' Day?
Sunday is...
Easter.
Easter, so...
But I think Monday is Patriots'.
It's like Marathon Monday.
It's Marathon Monday. Yeah, so Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
I don't have that in my calendar.
Go ahead.
All right. I move for the renewal of the Falling Pond Broker License under the provisions of Chapter 14070 of Mass General Law for the year 2025, pending department approvals for Gateway, Gold, and Pond Inc., 261 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
May I have a second?
Oh.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the Falling Secondhand Junk Dealer's License under the provisions of Chapter 14054 of Mass General Law for the year 2025, pending all department approvals. And paperwork are in order for 1 through 7 as printed in the agenda.
Can you read the names?
I can. Gateway, Golden Pond Inc., Church of the Good Shepherd, Ellis Computers, Friends of the Wareham Free Library, Used Tire Warehouse Inc., Trinity Christian Church.
I'm sorry, you skipped one. Is there a reason for that?
Because he...
Oh, it wasn't highlighted there. Sorry, my apologies.
Okay.
Magarain DBA Cranberry Flea Market.
Thank you. Motion made, and was there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve as listed and read. Any further discussion? Again, the paperwork will be, make sure the paperwork is in order before the licenses are handed out. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the Falling Common Vic License under the provisions of Chapter 140 of Mass General Law for the year 2025, pending department approvals. Carland of Cape Cod Inc., DBA Chills and Thrills at 3044 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Crow, Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of Falling Public Amusements on Weekend, Weekday License under Chapter 140 of Mass General Law for the year 2025, pending approve, department approvals. Carland of Cape Cod Inc., 3044 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that public amusement license. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so.
I move for the renewal of the Falling Public Amusement on Sunday License under Chapter 136 of Mass General Law for the year 25, pending department approvals, Carland of Cape Cod Inc., 3044 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. 02571.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve as read. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Interestingly enough, what you're seeing is a holdover from, I believe, the Blue Laws because the state has to issue the Sunday licenses.
They're so adorable.
The Blue Laws?
I was going to say, isn't that like 25 years old?
Any more than that.
30?
More than that.
Way more than...
Yeah. Okay, excellent. There, we have special event applications. And again, these are applications that have to go through a series of approvals through several different department heads. There's insurance involved. There's all sorts of information that the office collects on behalf of the select board who are the issuing authority. However, Mr. Chadwick, I listen to you.
I move to approve the following special events applications license depending on all department approvals. 1 through 5 is printed in the agenda. 8th Annual Harvest Triathlon, 32nd Annual Buzzers Bay Swim Event, Illumination Night, Harvest Moon Festival, Buzzers Bay Coalition Watershed Ride.
I just have an opinion to share.
May I have a second?
Second?
Yep.
The 8th Annual Harvest Triathlon is a remarkable event in my brain because I didn't know this is an honest-to-goodness triathlon held in Wareham. And I know it's been going on for eight years, but it took me a while to realize it's a triathlon, like really hard athletic stuff happening. And this year, I guess for the third year, they're not, the biking part is not coming through town. The biking part is going through Miles Standish Forest. So I think that is a really good switch.
That's interesting.
Yeah. And the place they're having it is in Makepeace Property, Tahoma Village. And they swim around the pond there. And then they run up the road and around Frogfoot Bog. And then they get on their bikes and drive, you know, ride up and through Miles Standish. So it is just an exhausting, incredible achievement. And it's right here in our town. So I just wanted to remark about that.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes. Again, the licenses can be picked up, probably not until next week. And you will be notified by the office when they are ready to be picked up. Okay, under Town Business, we did something our last meeting, last regular meeting. And I need a confirmatory vote motion, please.
Yes. I move to approve the confirmatory vote for the letter of support for the grant application for 2026 Food Needs Assessment, Cape Cod Cooperative, and Marion Institute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to confirm the action that was taken under 48 Hour Business on April 1st. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk.
Aye.
Ms. Corbett.
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick.
Yes.
And myself. Yes, it is so.
I move to approve the affirm, the appointment of Joshua Farady to the position of Director of Planning.
Second.
Okay, let me explain for the public. Under the Charter for Department Heads, the selectmen have a choice of three things. They can either choose to approve, choose to not approve, or to let it lie on the table, which in essence is approving it. I think it's very important for the public to know that Josh Farady has been with us for a couple of years and has done a magnificent job in the conservation and land use planning position. And he was made an offer, which he accepted last week. So we do have a motion to affirm the appointment, which is exactly, we aren't out making the appointment. We are affirming the appointment made by Human Resources. Any further discussion on the motion? Yes.
Just a little fun tidbit. Josh, I believe, is going to be great for this position. Hey, there he is. And I found out the other day, he was also a firefighter. So that makes him like 10 times cooler. Just wanted to say that, you know.
I didn't know that he was either. Yeah, cool.
I have a question. Does this bring Josh down to three jobs or two jobs?
That's not a fair question.
Oh, three.
It makes him a department head. And all our department heads have at least a dozen things they control, so.
Excellent.
Exactly.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Okay, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Congratulations, Mr. Farady.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Discussion impossible vote to start the process of consolidating polling places to two locations. We currently have three that serve six districts. And the town clerk has informed us that it would make more sense to have three precincts in each of two locations. One location would be the town hall, and one would be the basement of this building. The current location in the Hammond School is almost impossible for people to get to. There's virtually no parking, particularly in the spring, nice weather. The other location, polling location, is the Redmond Hall. Consolidating the precincts into two saves on police detail money, saves on having to move the, what do you call those things? You know, the consoles that we...
Booths?
Yeah, the...
The voting booth?
Yeah, the bo, yeah, voting consoles, whatever they're called. So the process is a long one. We would authorize the beginning of this. The town clerk would send letters to anybody who is affected on the voting rolls of the change. So for instance, if you vote in number three, I'm not sure whether you would go to this building or Town Hall building. That's a decision that the clerk will make based on the number of people who usually vote in all of the three, in the six precincts. And that would take over the summer, certainly. But it is something that we have talked about in the past, and our current town clerk is eager to start the process. And I didn't ask her here tonight because I thought I was able to explain it pretty well, but I know that Mr. Sullivan has also talked with her about this. Are there any questions?
I have. Go ahead.
Go ahead. That was first.
So I wanted to know how much money exactly is going to be saved because I can see some potential issues with this, so I would like to know exactly how much money are we saving?
Okay. I don't know the answer to that question.
Is Mr. Sullivan?
We would be saving police detail...
Yeah, this is not something that I have initiated. We do just think with the way voting is nowadays, bringing it into two locations rather than across the whole area that are fairly close, yes, you're saving on some police details, you're saving on also municipal maintenance going all the way across. You know, I do think if you have a massive presidential election, like we saw in this most recent one, you could have issues with that. But there's, you know, it's, you don't see too many places that don't have a single polling location nowadays. So it's, I think we've been pretty good about it, but the reality of it, especially when we have some of these elections where 1,200 people are coming out, it doesn't make much sense anymore. So it's something we need to look at for the realities of the situation.
Mr. Sullivan?
You're asking how much you can save. If you take, if you're getting away to detail officers, it's going to depend on their position. Potentially, you could have higher paid positions, which when it's a town one, it costs more, but you're probably looking at, just depending on detail pay, with the OT, it could be at $50, $60 an hour. You have multiple shifts because it's going all night long, so you could have a total of 16 hours there. So you're looking at, you know, you could save several thousand. There's initial costs, you have to mail out and inform everybody, but, you know, we do have the mail-in ballots. You do have all these other things. You do have the, you can mail, you can drop off the pre-mail. So the old-fashioned institution of you have to go to the location is fading away with all these, all these new things, unless we want to do away with those.
Thank you. I do, I do go in person, so I was concerned, I go to the Redmond, and I was concerned it's tough to find parking there sometimes. I could see longer lines. Depending, I know that not everybody goes to vote anymore, but I do think, you know, the Town Hall parking lot is potentially bigger than some of the parking lots of the current polling places, but, you know, it can get pretty crazy on certain days, so that would be one of my concerns. You had some thoughts?
Yes, so when I first ran for select board, I met an elderly Cape Verdean lady that, at the pole Hammond School, who said that she enjoyed walking because she wasn't able to drive down to vote in that area. And it kind of gets me thinking, I can understand to get rid of Redmond Hall, there's not really a walking distance, but we have a larger population down, of elderly, down in that area that aren't able to drive. They're really not, you know, yeah, some of them do use the mailing votes, but I'm just thinking of her off the top of my head. I can't remember her, I don't even know anything about her, I just remember talking to her that day. So I'm concerned about removing Hammond out of there for the reason of that.
Okay, so I, yeah.
My concerns are also with parking, and, you know, this, we have a very large lot here, but thinking about how busy it could be on a big voting day, you know, understanding that a lot of people are using mail-in ballots now, we don't actually know whether that's something we can count on in the future necessarily. So I'm worried that we not make it difficult for people to vote because it is so very important for people to vote.
I'd be fine with two.
Yeah, I think what I'd like to do is suggest that we ask the town clerk to be more specific, to actually have some numbers of voters who would be going to each one of the...
Yes.
Proposed two locations, but I don't hear a "don't do this" from...
Oh, no, I'm interested in exploring it. I do have reservations.
Yeah, and I think the issue of getting to the polls is a really interesting one, and I would hope that GATRA would be able to maybe do some loops through neighborhoods where people do not drive. So that would be a service that GATRA maybe could provide and through Serpents. Anyway, okay, so let's ask her to do some more homework on it. Excellent. Next, Dee, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, I move to approve the request of the Municipal Maintenance Director for abatement in the amount of $2,319.17.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that abatement. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so.
I move to approve Select Board Policy 2025-01 Meeting Agenda Posting Policy for Committees.
Okay, this request is at the suggestion of the town clerk, as well as our IT department. What they are finding is that people who have a Monday meeting are posting at 4:00, 5:00, and 6:00 on Thursday, and that creates a huge burden on them to get things done. If there's anything else going on in the office, things, it's just not realistic. The 54 hours is something that the clerk would be able to live with. Again, posting is done through email, posting through Wareham, meetings at Wareham, blah, 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 or agendas at. And I think that this is a request that makes sense from my perspective. Obviously, there will be times when a committee cannot do that, but there are, and I can think of possibly the land use committees might not be able to make that requirement at all times. However, I think it's important to understand the importance of getting the agendas posted in a timely fashion because if they're not, you can't have the meeting. So. Any discussion?
I, I think this clarification is really important. As you know, I've been working with the committees and boards that I'm either a member of or liaison to about agendas and minutes, and it's like been wonderful because no, no one has said, "I'm not doing it." Everyone has said, "Oh, tell me more. I want to make sure I'm doing it right." And this clarification, I think, is a really good one because that way, not only will it get posted in a timely fashion, but the fact that when you're sending out the agenda, in my humble opinion, you should be sending out the documents that are associated with the items that you will be discussing at the meeting. I mean, not for nothing, I used to do that when I was on the Board of Library Trustees, I was the clerk, and Holly Van Nest was our very strong, appreciated chair, and we made it, with her help, we made it into a science, that everybody got what they needed well ahead of our meeting so that we had plenty of time to take a look at it, the materials, digest it, and discuss it with some intelligence at our meeting. So I very much approve of this. I'm really glad it's being done.
You know, I, I am very much in favor of this. I think there has been a tendency to not, not accept that there are humans in the clerk's office who are receiving a lot of information from a lot of people and trying to make everything happen. And at times, this is rare, but at times, the sense that trying is as good as succeeding when it comes to getting your agenda in, and it's not, because it means you can't have your meeting. So I think this is a good change, and I think properly accepts the importance and the need for consideration of our clerk's office.
Clerk and IT office, both, both, it really came from both of them. Mr. Chadwick, any? Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Then I, I got a motion, right? And a second?
Yes.
Yes. Then I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We will, we being the office, will circulate this to all boards and committees and chairs. We will let the clerk and the IT department know. It takes effect immediately. So when Monday is a holiday, or if, you know, you have to remember that Friday counts for some instances, but I think this is going to make life a whole lot easier for our two departments, and I think that's only fair, as you have pointed out. Okay, Mr. Chadwick?
Just a clarification, this is essentially a policy that we're putting together or a request? So I make sure if somebody does not make it within the 54 hours, what have you, to emergency, are they still able to hold the meeting?
Oh, yeah, no, as long as you get it in within the 48 hour, you know, before the 48 hours, which is the law, this is giving our departments an opportunity to not go nuts at 6:00, which is what's happening. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chadwick?
I move to accept donation from Elizabeth Callaway to the Council on Aging in the amount of $500.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept a donation from Elizabeth Callaway. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Now, we discussed the following contracts, which will be appearing on the town meeting warrant, but we need to approve them in open session, so Mr. Chadwick, I'd ask for a motion, please.
Yes, I move to approve the following contracts. AFSMI Council 93, FL-CIO Local 30, Wareham Library Employees 2, Wareham Public Employees Union 1249, of Laborers International Union North America 3, Town of Wareham and Wareham Clerical Union of Public Employees Local Union 1234, excuse me, 124, of Laborers International Union of North America 4, Wareham Professional Firefighters EMT Association IFF Local 2895.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I just would like to point out to the public that I have no idea how many hours these contract negotiations have taken, but I can tell you it has been substantial over a period of a couple of months. Is that correct, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, it's starting back in October, so.
Okay, even more. Okay, motion has been made to approve as read into the record. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
I just want to point out something because it's been brought up question lately for me. I was advised three years ago by my local union president to abstain from all union votes, and I was recently informed from our new union president to abstain from all local union votes. I support him, 100% support him, but I've been told to abstain, and I'm going to follow my local union's advice.
Thank you. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Abstain.
And myself, yes. 301, it is so. Discussion impossible vote to recommend action on articles for the annual town meeting. I think we have the union contracts, which is item 13. So having done that, I would accept a motion to recommend favorable action to the town meeting.
Quick question.
Yep.
Are we gonna get more union contracts before town meeting, or this is it?
This is it?
Okay.
Got it.
No, that's not accurate. There, we are still working on the other ones that are outstanding. I have more meetings before town meeting. My goal is obviously to have everyone done since they would expire on June 30th for a couple reasons. One, obviously, there are employees, you want to work with them and, you know, have labor peace, if you will, and it's also, one of the big issues is outstanding obligations when they're looking at our bond rating or anything like that. So it's a sign of, it's a good sign. So we are still working on those. As to whether you'll accept them or not, that's up to you. I'm just saying, I'm still working on them.
That's what I thought I remembered from...
So I guess I have to ask, well, I'll ask the question later, but that means that the meeting before the town meeting, because that's our next regularly scheduled meeting, will have to be an executive session and then an open session, I believe. Okay, may I have a motion to approve, to recommend, to the, recommend favorable action to the town meeting?
On?
On items 13 on the annual town meeting warrant.
But pieces of them?
Well, you're voting on what you have before you at the moment.
As, as accepted by the, as accepted by the select board, would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Chadwick?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you, and myself. And you'll make sure that, okay, thank you.
I'll let her know.
And I believe that we have taken the action on everything that we need to on the annual. So let's go to the special. Mr. Sullivan?
So far, we have, we will have, there's, there's at least two budget transfers I know of that we're finalizing. One is with the Water Pollution Control Facility, one is with the Treasure Collectors Office, and then, excuse me, there's three. I think, I think we're $200 off on the assessing department salary, so I might need to honestly transfer $200 is our estimate for it, so. Treasure Collectors, it's, we're going to go high on the estimate, $12,500, two things. One, the people qualified for longevity payments that were not included, and then we also created two bookkeeper positions, as we know there's a major transition going on that department, so those funds would cover it. Water Pollution Control, we would be moving from expenses to, to salary. We've moved away from having the high-priced contractors doing work as we've been able to fill the positions at the Water Pollution Control Facility, and there's been a few major projects such as actually tackling the clarifiers that we have. We're going to go, we're going to transfer $60,000, but just so everybody knows, when we were looking at next year's budget, we actually reduced the contractor line by over $120,000 because of the staffing that we have now and taking on the projects, so. I think this is just, just shows that what it's, how it's running over there, and we're having good, you know, some good hard-working staff, so those are the transfers I have.
Excellent.
Question, oh, Mr. Sullivan, I can't recall whether you presented these to the FinCom. Have you done that?
Yes.
No, I've not done that. That'd be at the, I have to present those to the Finance Committee because I've received them since Thursday, these transfers.
Okay, thank you.
So, so they voted to recommend favorable action without the figures because we have a set of their recommendations?
Yeah, so they don't have the actual ones. We've just been waiting for this to get the, as we're looking at the end, because you do them a couple different ways.
Yep.
And I just wanted to make sure that we're accurate. You know, we could honestly, we could wait till, wait till the year-end transfers to do this, but we always feel if we think there's going to be an issue, the most transparent way is to bring it to town meeting, so.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? That answer probably. Thank you.
Just a favorable action on the mall?
Yeah, let's go through them, let's have you present each of them, Mr. Sullivan, and then we can go back and hopefully do them all. The fund, the parking program, which is the onset peer in the onset parking program?
Yeah, I thought we'd already done that, but I'm getting you guys in the Finance Committee next stop, so that's, I believe I have $70,000 transfer from that, from the receipts reserve for appropriation, onset parking fund. As you know, the fees from the parking meters and, and the, you know, the residential program go into this. There's, there's, there is enough money to cover this. I just have to double check. I thought we were, about several hundred thousand on it right now. We're looking at 70,000. What that gets is, is the actual seasonal employees doing the parking program, some of the maintenance costs, some of the, we have a, we have a vehicle that's dedicated to this, and then sometimes we actually do the onset programming as well, so if there's a small engineering project, some signage, things like that, that's all. But this is all dedicated to the onset area because it is the funds from the onset parking program going into it.
Thank you. Spring capital?
Spring capital, I'm going to give that to you. We went over it with capital planning and was approved, and we're updating the whole plan, and I'll bring that forward. We do have, to survey those, right now we've got for free cash, $4,298,642. We will not be expending all of it, but there are some major ticket items, like 1 million towards the Fearing Hill Bridge, 200,000 for the school for reopening the McDuffie Annex, and the WPCF is looking for a, a camera truck. That is something they, they're obligated to camera all their lines year in, year out, and they actually, it's, it's better to have our own staff trained so we can continue doing that the whole way. And I apologize, I'm still waiting to get the whole updated list from what we've approved. There is one municipal maintenance vehicle pickup. We have the weights and measures vehicle. I don't look, so, sometimes people don't know, we actually, we're too large, we have to do our own weights and measures, and the weights and measures vehicles we had basically died a few years ago. We've been using the old animal control vehicle for that. The problem with that is weights and measures, besides having these weights to offset, some pretty heavy when you're going to gas stations and such, you're also sampling the fuel and the fumes. So, we have that in enclosed vehicle, which has not been working too well. So, you know, that's the, that is, that's a safety issue. The problem with that, though, is that's an expensive vehicle, so that's about, I'm checking, 130,000, so. And there's, there's few, we're doing a hot box for municipal maintenance. Hot box is so we can have hot patch. Right now, the, we're contracted with the asphalt company that's over the line, Rochester Bit, I can't say it, but Bitmunis or whatever, they won't be opening until May. If we're in situations like that, when we have a hot box, we can actually pay, we can do pothole repairs and such without having to wait and doing cold patches, which as you know are useless, they'll, they'll pop right out right away, so those are, helps us not do the temporary Band-Aids. And then there's a chipper box for municipal maintenance, which is, which is a truck. Our, we have the boom truck, which has the availability to have the chippers, the chips put into it, but you can no longer legally do that if the boom's operating, and it just slows down the whole operation. So, this, the vehicle, Mr. Menard had originally had it funded for, I believe, 180,000, and we found one for 135,000, so. I apologize, there's, there's a few more, and I do have the, the capital list, but it's just not in front of me. So, I'm just giving you an idea of what we're, we're looking at it. We are planning to roll over, I believe, at least, at least $2 million of free cash to seed towards the next year.
I just have one question. Why isn't the pollution control camera truck coming out of, out of their budget?
It would be from their retained earnings.
I'm sorry?
Their retained earnings. Retained earnings are their version of free cash.
Okay.
So, I apologize if I gave the impression that's coming from free cash. No, that'd be there from them, their own, they're an enterprise fund, so they pay for their own items.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions of him? Nope. Let's move on to transfer of available funds, the stabilization, OPEB, collective bargaining reserve, Bayview Park and onset pier supplemental, and emergency operations, is what we had listed.
The stabilization fund, I don't, we'll, we'll put, we've already done it, so I'll hold off probably till October town meeting. We traditionally put about 150,000 in stabilization. The OPEB trust fund, 300,000 is what we usually put in, but we did that again in the fall. I think I was just looking at our, our returns on OPEB, and it was, we were only down 2% from the last month, so we'll, we'll see what's, what's what after, after what's the frothiness that we've experienced recently, but, so I'm not looking to put any money into that. I would like to put aside 100,000 into collective bargaining reserve with potentially some outstanding liabilities. Bayview Park and onset pier supplemental, 200,000. There are a few items that have been coming in more costly, the, when, when we spoke to people, we were looking to redo the, the gazebo, put a new one in there, but a lot of folks really cared about that structure itself, and as we were redoing part of it, we found a whole bunch of rot and have to redo the whole, whole interior. That was not part of the bud, the, the, the build out, so, and we bit it out, so we need to do that. And then this is part of the onset pier, what I'm talking about is, we're doing this beautiful park with all the brand-new sidewalks, and then you go to the pier, and it's the same, it's, you know, the same 1970s zebra. So, I'd like to see if we can get that done and fixed up and really in time for the summer as well. I think that'd be really great, so we have two, two fantastic openings, and it doesn't look like we have, I guess, mansion and shanty next to one another, so. Emergency operations, the emergency operations center has been completely opened up. We've got that available. It's been, we've utilized it for several things, including Keating's Visit, most recently some, some of the protests and a few other activities. It's really, it's paying dividends already, so it's a, I'd like to see that while we're putting that into the budget, there's, when we're doing emergency operations, this would be like going forward, if we had to buy food or anything, had to, had to house people, had to do things like that. I think that's, it's important to have those monies not set aside, and, you know, when it's a true emergency, when something's going down, I don't think we ever want to say, sorry, it's not in the budget.
Quick question. Is the emergency center physically housed somewhere specific?
Yes, it's at the, it's right across the hall from you.
Right over there.
The service center on that side, other side.
So, we're wicked safe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have a dollar amount on that one, Mr. Sullivan?
50,000. So, it would be C, collective bargaining reserve, 100,000. D, Bayview Park and onset pier supplemental, 200,000. And E, emergency operations, 50,000.
Thank you.
That would leave before the capital, 3,948,642 in, in free cash available.
Great. Priory bills, you're still working on those probably, or do we have?
Yeah, we're, there are none at this time, but those are, you know.
They pop up like dandelions.
Yeah, you know, I think that's the best way you can put it, so. PEG access, I don't know if we've already done this, but the transfer amount's 246,209.48.
Say it again. Thank you.
And I'm not being smart by putting the cents in there. This is just a holding account, so whatever goes in has to come out in a transfer.
The harbor services permit?
47,000, there's currently over 500,000 in that account. This is also receipts reserved for appropriation account. It's harbor services fees generated by it, so it should go back into the harbor services. So, this is, you know, this isn't something that could be used on teachers, police, or anything like that, and part of this, there's two things. There's the harbor, harbor plan, and also some of the dredging costs for this. So, this could get us some of the engineering for those, and that was requested by Mr. Buckminster.
Okay, lease on the building?
We're coming to the end of, of what I believe is a roughly 30-year lease. It was signed by a former town minister Hartman, so it's going back a ways, and it's the old, actually not the, it's the Memorial Town Hall, so 54 Marion Road. It is up in the attic and some of the cupola, and we currently have T-Mobile leasing the area, and that lease will be coming to an end. They've requested an extension, I've let them know that I can't just do that, this two things, because it would be up to 30 years. This will require a town meeting action, and then it will be required to be procured.
Okay.
So, this is nothing new, it's something that's been existing. Originally started at 1,800, and I just, I don't have the current lease amount, but it, you know, it generates, generates over 30,000 a year for us, so it's a, it's, it's a fine little amount.
Okay, the council on aging membership, I can do that quickly. It's at their request. They've done through their own meetings, a revision of their rules and regulations because the committee was set up, or the council was set up by town meeting vote to amend the number of people who are actually members, needs to go back to town meeting to be voted on, and this is at their request.
I'm sorry, it doesn't say anywhere in here council on aging board of directors. Is that, because this is what this is about. Am I missing something?
Council on aging membership. There should be a council on aging in accordance with, so.
The council on, I'm sorry, I'm being, being.
It's a council on aging committee. The council on aging is.
It's the board of directors.
Yeah.
Why, doesn't it say that? Because the council on aging is a much bigger organization.
The council on aging is a department, but it's also a council, we call it our council on aging. They are committee members, but they're members of the council on aging.
All right, I'm the only one who's not getting it, so I'll let it go.
Okay, thanks. On the Hammond School assessment?
Yeah, that's Hammond School. We currently, that's the building, the old school over in Onset, been returned to the town from the school years ago. Currently, the Christopher Donovan School rents out one portion of it, that would be the union ave side. You know, that basically covers, it's about 3,400 a month. That covers the cost of the building for heat and electricity. The other side's used by the Wareham Tigers, uses for cheer, wrestling, and other recreational activities, and that's, that's essentially just a, we're, we're not getting really any money out of that, but it's a used building and it's giving back to the community. The, we've done the roof on this. The next step is the outside, house is outside of it. I was making a joke that it's, it is housing right now because we have birds living in the siding of it, so, you know, obviously we need to get that taken, look at, and this is the assessment of it, and it gives an idea of what, what needs to be done, the costs associated with it, et cetera.
Thank you. We heard from the petitioners on the River, yeah, actually, the Riverwalk acquisition, so could you speak to the Swift, Swift Beach Recreational Area and Rehabilitation, please?
Yeah, at the end of Swift Beach Road is, is an access point to the beach. It is essentially a road to nowhere. You're not allowed to park on there, even though some people do. There's a bench at the end of it, and that whole portion has been eroding due to some of the major storms we've had. So, we're taking a look at it on how to do one of two things. Restore it back to its habitat and mainly provide recreational accessibility for this location. So, it would be demolishing the current pavement, bringing some of it back to nature, putting down an accessible path with some more seeding, a turnaround area at the top of it, and also some of the Mobi mats as well. So, originally, I believe, I had had 150,000. The community preservation committee was concerned that that wasn't enough as we had not done any borings into the, to the paving area. You know, and there is, like you said, there is some stormwater drainage there that cannot go away, we need to make sure that we keep that. So, this would do, it would create a really great entry point accessible for the Swift Beach area. We've done, we've done a few major projects down there, from the playground, also fixing the sewer lines down there so that they would not need the grinder pumps, which I know was, was really a big relief to the whole community, so this is our continued investment in one of our, one of our key locations in the town.
Did you, you had to go to the Concom to do this?
Uh, it, yeah, they did, they go in front of conservation. We're using EDR, the engineering company. We've done an additional engineering assessment, and this would take us the rest away plus the construction. It would not start till after the summer. I'm not, I'm not foolish enough to do this major project block access point during, during a swift summer.
Thank you. The next one is self-explanatory from CPC, which is returning unused funds from completed projects. They do this from time to time, they clean their books essentially. Article S14 in, Mr. Farady was here, I don't know, did he, is he going to come back? Do you know?
What?
Yep, excellent. Mr. Farady, do you choose to speak on article S14, which is the bylaw amendment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little unprepared. I wasn't expecting to. I was just kind of hanging out in your meeting while doing some other work, but yeah, I would, I would, I would like to share.
Okay, this is the one, the site plan review one, not the ADU, excuse me.
Okay, so, the revisions to article 15 under the zoning bylaw, site plan review, I'll sum it up as currently the site plan review process may lead to applicants being passed back and forth between the planning board and the zoning board indefinitely if they can't come to an agreement. So, the revisions to that would be if your application requires site plan review, and if it requires a variance or a special permit, it would go in front of the zoning board of appeals where then it could receive site plan review approval. If your site plan review requires a variance or special permit, and it is located in either the Wareham redevelopment district, or it is subject to section 590 and 597 of the zoning bylaw, which deal with ground-mounted, large-scale solar development and battery energy storage systems, then they would receive their variance or special permit from the zoning board of appeal, and then they would go back to the planning board to receive site plan review approval. I have a more clear flow chart that I am currently working on that will be presented at town meeting to explain that.
Excellent, any questions? Okay.
Just, just one, Mr. Farady. I think when this matter came before the finance committee, there was a point made about a potential Scrivener's error in the language. I do understand that this matter is going to come before the planning board on April 22nd, and I would expect that they will address that Scrivener's error. So, I would just say for myself, my opinion is, on this article is subject to the Scrivener's error being corrected as we move forward.
Yep, that is understood by the planning office, and those Scrivener errors will be corrected for, for the final product.
Thank you.
Thank you, excellent.
Can you, unless there are any questions on that one, can we move on to talk about the accessory dwelling unit ADU article, please?
Okay, hearing no questions, the ADU by law after hearing some, some outrage maybe at the last town meeting, we've really dialed it back to kind of being in line with what the state law has already provided. We've made some additional modifications requiring that there be one parking space required per ADU on a lot, with the exception that we cannot impose that condition within a half mile of a embarkation of a bus stop or train station. And then an additional restriction that we've put on it, and the language maybe, to read is a bit confusing, but ultimately what it does is it restricts corporations from buying a property, building a, an ADU, and then renting out both of the residents as short-term rentals.
Good.
Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay, let's go on to the hot S16, the solar bolt.
Yep, so the, the, the creation of the solar zoning district isn't so much a creation, it is a redefining of the business development overlay district that was created in the early 2000s. We are trying to limit the amount of solar that is allowed by site plan review special permit in front of the planning board, and changing the language of. special permit in front of the planning board, uh, and changing the language of the B-Dod to allow it there specifically, and removing it from all of the other zoning districts is the goal of this article. Uh, again, it would, it, it does not allow for, I'll say, by right, uh, nothing required. It is, it would still go under site plan review special permit in front of the planning board as it currently does.
Thank you, and both, well, all three of those either have had one, or will have had two public hearings, am I correct?
Uh, they, they will have had, okay, so ADU and solar would have had two public hearings that were advertised, and then the, uh, changes to Article fifteen, as Ms. Quirk stated, will be going in front of the planning board on April twenty-second.
And that's its second hearing? Or is that the first?
Uh, that would be the first hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about Josh, um, and I don't know if you can summon up the map yourself at this, at this moment, but I did have some folks ask me, is Charge Pond Road included in the B-Dod?
Uh, I can quickly, uh, pull it up if you just grant me one second.
Sure.
Do you have any questions? I don't think so. I don't know.
Cheers.
Yeah.
So right now you should, um, as I zoom out, you should see a map of Wareham. Um, I'm going to turn on a few layers to make it easily, easier to determine what you're looking at. Uh, the blue line here is the town line, um, and the B-Dod district is this highlighted yellow area. And I will zoom in, you'll see that on the, um, eastern extent is Tyhonet Road, and on the western extent is, uh, Charlotte Furnace Road. Uh, for the most part, twenty-five intersects, uh, the, the southern extent, except for, uh, this area on the right-hand side that, uh, goes all the way down to, um, the Rosebrook Developments. This is the, the Saga, um, the Five Guys, some, some areas like that. Um, so the question being, does it extend to Charge Pond Road? The answer to that is no.
Great, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, any other questions? Mr. Farady, thank you very much, and again, appreciate the work that you've done, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We confirmed you, as you heard. And, and Mr. Sullivan, did you put in a requisition for all of his hats that he now has to wear? Is that part of his uniform now? No? Okay. Okay, um, we should now move on to discussion and possible vote to recommend favorable action on these, and I think, let's go from the bottom up. Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, do any of you have any concerns about recommending favorable action on that one?
No.
Make a motion.
Make a, uh, I move to recommend favorable action on special town meeting articles seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Second.
Motion made in second to recommend favorable action to the town meeting, is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Corbett, Mr. Chadwick, and myself.
Aye.
Yep, okay. And let's do the three planning ones, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
Recommend favorable action on special town meeting articles fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to recommend favorable action on those, any further discussion on those? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk? Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Aye. Subject to the understanding that the Scrivener's error is going to be corrected.
Excellent, I, is that part of your motion? Excellent. Um, any, roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, excellent. Um, let's see, let's do twelve and.
Should we do the rest of them?
Um, yeah, go ahead.
Any objection?
Nope.
Move favorable action on.
Actually, I would, I'd ask you to hold S eleven aside.
All right, uh, I move for favorable action on special town meeting articles one through ten and twelve.
And thirteen.
Thirteen, did we just, oh, yeah, twelve and thirteen.
Motion made in seconded to recommend favorable action on all of those.
Yep.
Motion made in seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Aye, it is so. Next.
I move favorable action on special town meeting article eleven.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to recommend favorable action on that one, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? I'm abstaining. And I believe that does it, am I right?
Yes.
I'm sure I am. Okay. Back to the agenda. Did we do twelve and thirteen? Yeah, we just did.
Yes.
Okay. Excellent, um, I have no forty-eight hour business. Mr. Sullivan, got anything else to tell us?
Well, I apologize for, uh, being a little late, I had a massive PowerPoint meltdown. I did the, uh, trying to give you an update on Bayview Park, that was more visual, so unfortunately I'll have to be vocal. Uh, the, uh, so I was out there today, we're, uh, most of the, uh, most of the paving's concrete's in, um, you can probably see the forest of New Period Lights in there, which is going to be fantastic lighting it up. A couple different things, as I said, the gazebo, we're redoing the, the whole bottom interior of that, uh, we've ordered up the, uh, the new benches for the whole interior of it. Uh, Aquina's now in her location and looking back upon the bay again, which is fantastic. Uh, some of the railings have been going in, and, uh, they're just making a tremendous amount of progress. Most of the loam's in, so we're going to start getting the seating going, and, uh, it's, it's just, and each and every time I go in there, more and more amazed by it, so I apologize, I don't have the, uh, the pictorial update of you, if you will, but, uh, it's been coming along great. Uh, you know, we have Weston and Sampson, the engineering, and then Lawrence Lynch doing the work on it, and then Mr. Menard and his staff have been fantastic. There's a couple, uh, prior things that'll be surprises for folks, which, uh, you know, we, we were able to use some, uh, onset artifacts, if you will, as features throughout the whole thing, so, uh, I'm really excited about it, so. Uh, I won't ramble on anymore, I apologize again, it would have been very nice as a, uh, as a PowerPoint, but for some reason going in between, uh, Apple and, uh, and, uh, PC doesn't always have feeling results, so. Uh, outside of that, no, uh, it looks like we, spring has sprung, we're finally having some, uh, though not quite dry, some nice, uh, warmer weather, so let's hope this is a sign of having a really great summer. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, we'll move on to liaison initiative reports, Ms. Quirk? No? Ms. Corbett?
I just have one, I had more, but, um, read Wareham Week. Um, but the other, the one thing I did want to mention is on this upcoming Thursday, April seventeenth at noon, the Massachusetts Municipal Association will be hosting a webinar on artificial intelligence for municipalities, and I will be attending, and I believe Connor Alden, the Wareham Redevelopment Authority intern, will also be attending, and I, you know, hope he is going to give the WRA a presentation, and then if we so choose, perhaps he could give this board another presentation. I think there is a lot of potential in artificial intelligence to automate routine tasks that could take the load off of talented, skilled people, hardworking people, to do then more important things. So I think this is something worth exploring, like I said, I intend to, um, sit in on that webinar, and I, uh, you know, not insist, encourage you guys to also, if you get the MMA newsletter, there's a link there for Thursday, April seventeenth at noon, to sit in on this webinar, so that's all I had.
Thank you.
I have nothing.
Okay. Um, I want to congratulate Mr. Chadwick, who won't speak up on his own behalf, but he has spent two weeks in sort of some grueling training.
Four, five, five weeks altogether, hazardous materials technician, and out at, uh, a convention in Indianapolis, uh, training with rope techs and fire operations.
So he's, he's been busy, and, um, I just want to say thank you very much, I know first responders have a lousy job from time to time, and I commend you for your service to the town and the public that you serve.
Thank you, I can highly recommend, if anyone's interested in a hazardous materials technician, don't do it.
Nobody expected that, ended.
Yeah, right, it's, it's good, it was, uh, a lot of hard, hard work. I've always been interested in that field, um, dressing up in the green suits and going to dangerous situations. Uh, my end goal is to be able to join the state hazmat team, uh, the Mass State Police, J-Hert, um, and FEMA, uh, so, still got a lot more classes to finish, but I'm getting close.
Good, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to mention that the other really exciting project in Onset is the Lopes Playground. Every time I go by, which is on a daily basis, I will have you know, um, there is something even more exciting going on, and I just want to thank the CPC committee for providing the funds, the town meeting for providing the funds for what's going to be the totally accessible playground in the town of Wareham for several different age groups, and, uh, it's been, it's been a lot of work, but, um, there are still pickets available.
Oh, Ms. Whiteside, yes, thank you, how do we get them? I want one.
Yes, you go online for, you go to the Facebook of Core, C-O-R-E, okay? Um, and they have a, um, you know, form right there.
Great, thank you.
Okay, yep. Um, they're a hundred dollars a piece, actually the pickets are made out of recycled milk bottles, so it's all good stuff. Yeah, it's, it's cool, yeah.
What's the weight limit on the slide? Just curious for the bigger kids.
Do I have to answer that?
How much do you weigh?
No. No, 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 no.
Two seventy-four.
Um, excellent, so it, it's, we have a, um, a date of June fourteenth for an opening day ceremony, and I expect that that's going to be kind of cool. Anyway, other than that, let's go to the minutes, please, and you're going to hold on the.
Yep. I move to approve, I know.
This one can be released.
Okay. I move to approve the meeting minutes, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, regular session, and the meeting minutes of April first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve those minutes, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? Yes, it is so.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of April eighth, twenty twenty-five, executive session and release.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve and release, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? It is so, and last?
I move to approve the meeting minutes, joint meeting with planning board, April eighth, twenty twenty-five, executive session and hold.
A second.
Motion made in, seconded to approve and hold, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? I find that there is no further meeting, this is to come before this meeting, Mr. Chadwick?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to adjourn, it is not debatable, I will go for a roll call vote, Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself? It is so. Good night, Wareham, and thank you very much.
Aloha.
Thank you.